We have a meeting to order at seven o'clock. Roll call.
Ed Marques, Gert Schur, Sean Harley.
Randy Snead.
Erica Parton.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Mulaney.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing for the people out there, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Marques. He's our newly elected council member. And also bring him back Erica Parton. She is a re-elected council member. Nomination of offices. Council President and Vice President.
I move to nominate Randy Snead as town council president for 2023.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Randy Snead as being the president of the town council for 2023. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I nominate Sean Harley for Vice President.
We have a nomination. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a nomination and a second for Sean Harley as Vice President for the year 2023. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Sean.
I abstain.
Appointment of Town Attorney. Attorney, I'm sorry. Mr. Jones, could you accept the appointment of Town Attorney if you were still voted in?
Absolutely.
I move to appoint Derek as the Town Attorney.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to make Mr. Derek Jones a Town Attorney. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Jones.
Thanks. Sorry, I missed the last thing you did.
Yeah, we, if you missed two, then you would be. We're gonna do the utility clerk way down there. Okay. Minutes. 1220, 22 regular session. And 1228 special session.
Do we have to do those separate motions?
You don't have to. You can approve them together or you can approve them separately.
I'll approve the minutes for 122822.
And 1220.
I can't, I mean, you can still, you can still motion to approve them. But if you want to abstain from the final, you can do that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I have a second for the minutes for December 20th and the 28th of June.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 122022 regular session and 12282022 special session. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Randy Snead.
Minutes passed. Citizens input. Mr. Noel, you have any input?
Congratulations on your guys' victory and keep it up.
I'd like to thank George again. We have him passed, but so. It's been, George has been mainstay in the town government here for a long time, a long time. I want to thank him for leaving us something of well good to believe, so.
Right. That's what's in good crate shape. Just me, it was everybody.
I understand, but you were a part of it. I think that recognition is.
Attorney report.
Guys, just one thing I've got down on my list, but I'm still working on the school resource officer. We're kind of like tweaking that thing and we're in pretty good shape. Pretty well close.
Yeah.
They set that out like at six thirty. So just review it. We'll probably do it at the next meeting. Derek, is there any more questions or?
I got a six fifty three, so.
Concerns that we've got.
I haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Basically, it was the report.
Yeah, I should have looked at it.
They just changed a couple of words. They don't add.
Dental administration and stuff like that. Again, I think we're in good shape. And I don't see anything that the school would object to. I think. Again, they've been doing this stuff for four months. We're just kind of trying to memorialize what we have in place.
He was over here today and we had a meeting with him and he pretty much understood everything. He was pretty happy with it. So they have to have, they have to have a school board meeting.
Sure, absolutely.
Which is?
I think it's next Monday.
That's what he said.
Actually, it's probably the following Monday. Normally it's the third Monday. Oh, that's probably March 13th, so it probably is this coming Monday.
Okay.
He said he hoped to have three weeks meetings.
And that's all I had to report. I'm sorry, guys.
Motion to accept the attorney report?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other old business. Do we have anything else that needs to be brought up, left over from last year?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. Let me think about it.
Did you get your checkbooks to bill?
Almost.
She's sending a few thousand.
She's a lot better than she was.
Thirty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. It's all I got to find.
Yeah, you're in the September.
No, I, that's, I'm only three November, so.
And it's all, just so, and I know she's told you, I worry, it is all software. It's not even she's gotten that.
Yes, we know that.
Okay, 2023 meeting schedule. Our meetings are held on the first and third Wednesday of the month. At seven o'clock on the first and we have a workshop at six o'clock on the second meeting. Now, I was informed that we could just say that we have a workshop prior to every meeting now. And then if we don't need it on the first meeting, we just don't, we let it go. But by stating this, then we can have it, it will already be out for public notice and everything. So we could have a workshop scheduled for the first meeting of every month. And the third.
Or you could say only in the odd months because the police commission does have their meetings in even months. I mean, it's, it's up to you, but, or you could just leave it and if we need that first workshop, we'll just do that one.
My only, my only problem with it is the three months there where it's real hard for me to make it six o'clock. And that's just me, and I know I'm just one person, but I just wanted to throw that out there. A half an hour, it seemed like much, but it is big for me because a lot of times I can't get out of bed until five thirty or forty, so. But it is what it is.
It is nice to have that second meeting workshop though, if you guys need something big that you need to discuss and stuff before the meeting. But you guys, it's your meeting to decide what you want to do.
Guys, I have perfectly clear ideas of what it were. I just was throwing that out there. If I'm not here, don't be surprised.
We need a motion for the meeting schedule.
I'll make a motion to keep the meeting schedules the same, have an hour-long workshop before each meeting at seven o'clock.
We have a motion and a second to keep the meetings on the first and the third Wednesday of the month. With a workshop scheduled for both meetings at six o'clock if needed, and then the regular meetings at seven o'clock. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting schedule is passed. Appointment of Utility Clerk.
Got your chance here, haven't you?
I move to appoint Lisa Mulaney Utility Clerk.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Lisa Mulaney as Utility Clerk. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lisa, you're stuck with us for another year. Appointment of Development Director.
I move to appoint Mark Vanderwill as Development Director for 2023.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mark Vanderwill as Development Director for the year of 2023. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointment of Liaison. The only one that I want to speak up on here is the Police Department. I'd like to see Mr. Sean Harley kept as the Police Department Liaison. I feel he's been doing a very good job in being involved with the Police Commission. Gives him a little better outlook on that one.
They're your appointments.
Oh, they're my appointments? Okay, so then I appoint Sean Harley as the Police Department Liaison. Erica, would you like to stay on the park?
Sure.
Erica Parton as the Park Liaison. The utilities has been Sean and I together and it seemed to work out real good that way. I can come down here during the week and Jamie has problems, we can go over things and look and see things and Sean can, as he sees, can call him and talk to him about it. So I'd like to keep that. Redevelopment Commission. Gary, Ed, you guys can have your choice. Whichever one we would like to be liaison to the Redevelopment Commission.
I kind of, and no, nothing against Erica, I kind of was, was hoping to stay as the park liaison this year to at least get them through this year. Just so next year they can hit the ground right. I mean, again, I.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I'm on the redevelopment.
No, and they am.
Okay, so we'll go back then. We'll point Mr. Ed Marques as Park Liaison. And then Erica will, since she is already on the Redevelopment Commission, will take over as the, as the Redevelopment Commission Liaison.
And Gary?
And Gary.
If we can't keep George, because I'm, I'm pretty sure that his, if we can't, we're gonna try. But I haven't had a time to look into it, but the Plan Commission, would you be interested in that?
Yeah.
Because right now George is on the Plan Commission as a government. And, you know, but I have to get with Derek and I, I just have a lot going on, so.
He can still take the government.
Right, but then we're hoping to move you into the other spot that is open.
Okay, then we'll put Gary Shue in as the, this is the Plan Commission.
I'll have to have, I'll have to have one, whoever his appointment that is, whether it's the whole council or whether it's.
Not a liaison appointment.
He would actually be on the commission.
He would be on the Plan Commission Board itself. And I don't doubt that he can do that. The question is, can George stay on one wayship or the other?
I'm looking.
Whatever, whatever happens. I mean, I know I can't as government, but if I can as a citizen, that's fine. If I can, I can. I'm just offering my services. Thank you.
So that's the appointment of.
Well, we'll just wait on that one because Derek and I have to look at.
It's not an appointment.
No, no, it's, it's an appointment to the Plan Commission. It's not a liaison.
Just for the liaison.
So we're just appointing Gary to the.
If, yes, but I have to figure out if it's a council president appointment or if it's a council.
So we'll take, we'll table that one to the next meeting. Okay, Gary? Resolution 2023 Power Tracker. Well, that's a tiny little bit.
Yeah, this, this one was kind of a big one, I think.
It wasn't quite oh oh code.
There's usually three zeros there.
But he did tell you guys.
I know. We knew there was going to be a.
And this is mostly because of fuel costs adjustment from last year. We're catching up with it on this one, so.
I move to pass resolution 2023 dash zero one Power Tracker.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to pass resolution 2023 dash zero one Power Tracker. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other new business. Yes, sir.
Next Wednesday, the 11th, will be the first communications board meeting for the county. Is it the 11th, Tuesday, Wednesday, the 12th? 12th, excuse me. Nope, gotta go one more year. Long year of. The 11th next Wednesday will be the first communications board meeting. At seven o'clock at the jail. If anybody, it's open to the public. What time is that?
Anything else?
Yet you, there's obviously one opening on the park board currently. We need to, I would recommend that we advertise that that opening is there and have people submit letters of interest for that position.
We have one.
Well, I know there's others that were interested and just, I'm just saying, I think, just open, that's what we always done in the past. I mean, and it's, it's whatever you guys, I mean, whatever the council decides, it's, I think, just.
I agree with that. I think it's important to keep these committees and that fully staffed and functioning as seamlessly as possible. So I'll move to allow them to post for the public to enter letters of intent to join the park board.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to post the opening for the park board and let people, people turn in letters of intent. Any further comment on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
I have one small piece of information for the council. A phone call from Chief Bowman yesterday. The 2017 Charger was in the shop. The power steering pump was out. Of course, that was, that's an expensive one. Also, he has a headlight assembly that is bad. It won't hold the headlight. He gave me the pricing on that. By the time I had the pricing for both of them, he was over his limit. I told him that they, they want fourteen hundred dollars for a headlight assembly. I told him that's too much money. I looked it up on my computer and it says, I've seen it for half price. I said, talk to Jamie. I don't know if he talked to you, Jamie. But I asked him to talk to you to see if what you guys could come up with to possibly change the headlight.
I told him, bring it back. We'll look at it, see if we can do it.
And, but I did tell him to go ahead and get the power steering pump because that's kind of a major thing. They got special tools and things for that, but I, I would not clarify.
If we look one up, I think we found one for about.
That's pretty, they got special tools and stuff for that, Randy, that they have to do, so.
It's about right. So since you asked that, Sean.
Price. I'd pay two hundred just for the bulb.
They want fourteen hundred for the whole thing.
Yeah, that's the, that's the bond and everything.
We found one for about three fifty, so we'll see if we can get it in. I don't, I don't know what all entails, but what we're.
Anyway, that was the synopsis of our conversation. I told him if he wanted to do any more than that, I'd have to bring it to the council for a vote. But he could get the power steering pump done. That was within his limits, so. And I felt that in the interest of time and essence and not having that because he had to tear about half the engine apart to get the things changed, so. I just, I was trying to take Jamie's time into consideration and his people too, because I know they're busy, so.
What's our replacement plan, Sean, for that one?
That one, I think, has two years yet.
Okay, well, you know your time for an ordering, so.
So I think, I think we'll talk to. We have a police commission meeting next month and that will be on the agenda. We'll discuss that with him then as far as getting everything brought forward to the council, so.
We bounce a phone?
That I can't tell you with right now. I can't tell you. But I think that one is, as far as, that's, I'm pretty sure that's the next one up to do and I think it's two years yet.
Oh, I might have changed my phone number to dial it.
We've, this, this is just, it's, it should have actually been brought up under old business maybe, but anyhow. So we brought the one ambulance in and Joseph Ruffin worked on it, worked on it and got it going and got everything going. Well, it puked again. It's actually lost a fuel injector. For, we think. We're not going to tear into it. It's too expensive, too time-consuming. It would require way too much work. So we're back down to one ambulance. We're probably going to put that one on Marketplace or something like that, wherever you guys sell used vehicles and try to sell it as is. We think, we still can't get any trade-in out of it. There's hardly any trade-in value, but we think we, it's got a good, it's got a good frame, good transmission and stuff. It's just the engine could possibly need a fuel injector, so.
Six four.
It's a six four.
I don't know nothing about it.
No, actually, I don't think it is. That one's older.
Yeah, that might be a six two.
Five, seven.
It's one of these seven threes. Yeah, it's not the six oh, but it's not a six four either. Six four was later. It's before the six oh.
I think the seven three is what they.
Yeah, they work.
Well, anyhow, it's just been, it's just getting to be nothing but a nightmare, so.
The box is good on that.
The box, we're trading, we're putting the box on the new chassis, which they can't do that to February, so. That's where we're at on the ambulance. If you see the same old ambulance and it is re-lettered, it does say artist fire territory on it now. So if you see it running around, that's because they only have the one again, so. But already this year, they've had nine calls, so they've been really busy. They ended up last year, three hundred and seventy?
No, three seventy-nine.
Three seventy-nine. Three hundred and seventy-nine calls last year.
And took them all. That's important part.
What is it?
When you took them all.
We took them all and didn't miss one. And knock on wood, there was only select few where we had both ambulances out but one down.
Yeah, so we've, we've actually, our EMS has really improved. It's been a great thing for us. Okay, authorization of payment of budgeted donations. Lisa, do you have any comment on that?
So every year we give to the Humane Society. We give to the Council on Aging. We give to the American Legion. I know Sean normally wants me to drag them in here and have them tell us what they want to do. We have never upgraded the contract with the Humane Society. We've never done anything else. The Council on Aging is something we've just always given to.
We had been here a year ago, didn't we, Lisa?
Two years.
Yeah.
Two years.
Okay, so.
We didn't have them last year. You said to go ahead and pay them out last year and then.
I think I, I think we're might, just for the discussion here, and this is kind of sticking with me. I hate to donate without, you know, having some kind of knowing what they've done for us, so. I'm okay. I would be okay with authorizing this tonight as long as along with that went a request for a yearly report on what, how they serve our community, you know, as far as how many people, how many meals they saw, how many rides they gave or how many dogs they helped us with or, you know, depending on the function. That'd be my.
We could take a paper.
Yeah, they could just write us a report and send it back to our media and we could say, okay, we feel like, you know, I'm okay with approving that this year. You know, if they can't provide us with a report, then next year we'll have their discussion.
I will tell you that with the Humane Society, they have really worked with us on our dog tags. So if they pick up an animal and that animal belongs to anybody in town, they will call us and they will be like, hey, this is a dog that is in your town. It's owned by this person. Do they have artist tags? And if they don't, they will make them prove vaccinations and get tags before they'll release the dog. So they are working for us.
I just feel like there's a two-way street. They, they, we don't, we want to help the community, but we also want to have accountability back for our relations. And I think that's the prudent thing to do.
But I think if you get on, if you look at it, I think it would be kind of hard for the Legion to tell you what they.
The Legion was the one off, was the one off.
We've already.
We know what the Legion does.
Yeah, right, yeah, you're right. We have, I've never asked anything of the Legion.
We always just let the Legion go.
Because that's mainly just flags for the grays and, and that wasn't like just a blanket donation. So, yeah, that, good point, Ed. So I would like, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve those as long as the Council on Aging and the Humane Society provide us a yearly report of their activities helping our residents.
I'll second that.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to authorize payment for our budgeted donations. With the request that they do offer us a, or do send us in a report of what they've done with our donations.
Just how many people they've served. That's what, you know, I just want to know.
Sure.
Just technical.
Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What about the summer festival?
We know that's not it.
We budgeted for it, so I'm asking. Are we just gonna pay it? I mean, is it, because that is a budgeted donation, so.
I think I'd like to see a report where that all in. I don't really sure what their balances are.
We paid for the fireworks. That's what I.
That's basically what it goes to.
That was, was it? You could be a bigger help here than what anybody, I mean, you're pretty healthy and bold than that.
That's, and that's basically, I mean, that's, that is the majority of what that money goes to is the fireworks. If not all of it. No, it is, because actually they're just. Yeah, because the fireworks are not that. Yeah, because they cost more than that, yes.
There's no carryover funds for fair, for, I mean, you spent everything.
Either what you did, now we do, we're actually finally starting to carry a balance. I, I'm just guessing here. Probably a couple three thousand. I mean, I'm not an exact figure for you, but we're finally starting to get to where we're not out of the DJ, so.
That is a wine item, but.
It is, yes.
Yeah, I would include the festival in with that original motion.
I just wanted to make sure clarification that I can pay it, so.
Oh, anything else? No? Okay, claims.
Hey, well, you have the claims in front of you. It's like four hundred and eight thousand.
Four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
There you go. And they are from December twentieth until January third, which was yesterday. I was still, I was putting in bills yesterday, so. And you also have all your fund reports for the end of the year, your appropriation reports and your revenue reports. Some of the things that I think that we need to go over this year are some of the contracts that we have out. We have an MCEDC contract. We have a Chuck DeWitt contract. We have a, we're gonna have to bid the cemetery contract again.
This year?
I think so. I think it was only a one-year contract. I'm pretty sure.
Are we raising this, the price?
We're gonna have to sit down and do, yeah, grave spaces and stuff.
Should we just maybe make that be our first workshop, just kind of plan on that at this point? I think it tends to do, I mean, before we know it, the moment season's gonna be here, so we need to start item signing stuff out.
Well, the bid. Well, the bid, I mean, for the cemetery, we won't know how much that is, and we usually bid it out around February, I think, March, yeah. So if, you know, if you want to do a motion to bid it, because you know you're gonna have to, then Derek can get started, but if not, then.
I think the sooner the better.
Yeah.
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 I, I'd like to make a motion then to allow the town attorney to start drawing up the contracts to take bids for mowing the cemetery.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to allow the town attorney to start working up, get, for getting bids to mow the cemetery for next year, or for the year, this year, twenty twenty-three. Any further comment? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, Lisa, you're gonna have to review this resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, George, I'm married to Gary.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I.
Once again.
George, just draw, draw a line through there.
Just draw a line and write the name below it, and.
Okay.
But, okay, so.
At least you got twenty twenty-three on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You wait.
Yeah, I'm trying to see.
Day one.
Can you change a view at the top?
It just.
No, no, it, you go and do it to the point it's in PDF, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's a painter's.
There's no option on this one.
I just click the button right here.
How did you do it?
I just click the button right here.
He's got, he's got a different program.
Yeah.
He's got a.
Oh, well, you should all have the same program.
No.
No, theirs goes into an Excel file, and mine goes, mine actually preserves in a PDF.
Yeah, see, when it first opens, it's in PDF.
The claim, the claims, the coach sheet. We got rotated, we got PDF.
Close it, and reopen again, it comes in an Excel.
Yeah, so I got PDF reader too.
It's not an Excel file, so.
Need to download Adobe Reader.
Just rotate it clockwise or whatever.
All right, claims, so we still have.
All right, so we've, we've read the claims.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve claims.
Twelve twenty.
Twelve twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, to January the third, twenty twenty-two, for four hundred and three thousand, or twenty-three, I'm sorry. Four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
You gotta type with her, too.
Okay, well, it's the first of the year.
Yeah, I was just reading what she had there.
All right.
Any further comment?
That's the one thing he didn't point out.
If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims is passed.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Put a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.